I'd like to call to order the March 1st, 2018, meeting of the Barnstable Town Council. Please note that tonight's meeting is recorded and broadcast on Channel 18, and that in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20, I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting, and if so, to please make their presence known. Please state your name and organization. Hyannis News, Rob Bastille. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no others, please silence your devices. Madam Clerk, may we have the roll call.
Counselors. Eden Bender.
Here.
Crocker.
Here.
Cullum.
Here.
Dagwan.
Here.
Flores.
Here.
Rapgrassetti.
Present.
Hebert.
Present.
Levek.
Present.
Neary.
Here.
Schnep. Stein Hilber.
Here.
Tinsley.
Here.
Wallace.
Here.
Thirteen.
Thank you very much. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, before we get into public comment, I actually wanted to take a couple of presentations right off the top, because I know we've got some people who are eager to get home, do homework. It is a school night. So, we're going to start with the -- we're really happy to have both these groups here tonight. We're going to start with the Barnstable Youth Commission. They have an update for us. I'd welcome your members forward to come introduce yourself. You can sit at the tables here, and as long as the green light's on the microphone, they're good to go. Welcome.
Good evening, I'm the Town Council. My name is Matthew Hershey. I'm the Chairman of the Barnstable Youth Commission. And I'd like to formally thank you, President Stein Hilber, Vice President Crocker, and the entire council for having us here tonight. We're really excited about it. And I'd like to begin by recognizing the incredible work of youth nationwide at this political moment. We need to look further than the youth. We need not look further than the youth to address issues that we'll see throughout the future. And I think that when we empower the voices of youth, we find the simplest solutions to our greatest problems. If you're not -- if you're unfamiliar with the Youth Commission, we're an appointed commission by the Town Council, allotted thirteen positions. We currently have nine members, so that means we have four open slots for anyone above eighth grade in the town of Barnstable. We have eight members from Barnstable High School, and one member from Sturgis. So, I'm Matthew Hershey, the Chairman of the Barnstable Youth Commission. Tonight, we have Caleb Sonnibend, our Vice Chairman, Michael Booth, Connor Levek, and Ethan Serhall. I'd also like to recognize our adult advisors. First of all is Kippy Diggs, who is our Adult Advisor. And he's extremely invested in the youth. Secondly, we have Lieutenant Jeanie Tralas from the Barnstable Police Department, who gives us great insight to the Police Department, and gives us fantastic counsel throughout all our meetings. Third is Lynn Poyant, who gives us great leadership with inside -- within Town Hall. We also have Jennifer Cullum, our Town Council Liaison. And I must say, though I'm sure she'll be rolling her eyes, this commission would not exist in the way it does without the work of Patty Machado. We were -- we meet every second and fourth Tuesday at 6:30 PM at the HYCC. And our season really kicks off in March. We have a number of scheduled points coming up very soon. The Community Substance Abuse Prevention Forum, the Seventh Grade Youth Summit. And we also work very closely with topics such as bullying. We're advising the BAS HYCC after-school program with topics that they should be discussing. We work in intergenerational programming. We're trying to move the One Love Program into the high school regarding relationship violence. And we're also meeting with local and state officials fairly regularly.
Hi, my name is Michael Booth. So, last year, we had the opportunity, as a commission, to go to the State House to meet with some state officials there. We met with Julian Seer, Randy Hunt, William Crocker, and Tim Whalen. And it was a great opportunity to be able to get our ideas that were happening in the town, and have them happening throughout the entire state. And in reverse worship, have people on the state tell what we can do in our town as well. And we can get what the youth is thinking on a statewide level as well. Other officials that we meet with are the school committee. We had a meeting with them last night at their meeting, which went very well. We meet with the superintendent on a monthly basis, with the town manager, the council on aging, and Attorney General, Laura Healy. Last June, we had the Intergenerational Tea, which brought together the elderly senior citizens in our town and the youth. And it was a great chance to be able to talk to some older folks in our town and hear what they had to say, and their stories, and all of it through all their wisdom. On the picture on the left, I was sitting next to a woman who was over a hundred years old, and she had some great things to say, asked some great questions. And also, at this event, we were celebrating Dorothy Robinson, being awarded the Boston Post-Cane Award for the oldest resident in the town. She was 104. She has to earn 105 in January. At this event, we invited over 500 people in the town that are over 90 years old. They have great longevity in our town, of course. In attendance, we had over 100 people that are over 90 years old, and three people that are over 100.
Good evening. My name is Ethan Serhall. So, we felt that, as the Youth Commission, as technology's become more and more deeply rooted in our society, especially in our youth, it was pertinent to educate ourselves on the dangers that come along with it. So, we attended a cyberbullying seminar presented by Dr. Meg McCoy through Bridgewater State University. I personally found this very interesting, very insightful. There's so many trains of thought on the subject, but to really hear a professional opinion, and, you know, to kind of understand the cause and effect that come with cyberbullying, I thought it was great. And hopefully, we can use that information at some point to have a positive effect on middle schoolers, high schoolers, and to kind of give them life lessons on what to do and what not to do on social media as it becomes a very integral part of our society, so.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Caleb Sonnibend. I'm here to speak on the Youth Job Fair. This will be our second annual Youth Job Fair. It will be held on March 27th, Tuesday, from 2:30 to 5:00 PM, open to everybody from the age of 14 to the age of 18. It's held after the Youth Summit. We hope to have a good -- or, last year, rather, we had a fantastic turnout from all across the Cape. Many people outside of Barnstable even arrived, and it was fantastic to have them here. Many employers were there to have people join them, such as Shaw's, Four Seas Ice Cream, Chick-fil-A, and Subway. Warren Rutherford was there to help write resumes. He is of Executive Suite and a former town manager. We're hoping for a better turnout this year, because we have an updated flyer, and we're hoping to get them out to more schools across the Cape. Following -- or, rather, before the -- before the Youth Summit, we have our Community Prevention Forum. This takes place this year on the 15th of March at 5:30 PM at the Cape Cod Community College. Primarily, this is used as a night to educate parents, and we have fantastic speakers in the past. We've had Michael Devlin, who was a former graduate of Barnstable High School, who became addicted to opioids, who has since recovered. And he had fantastic speech to give to all the parents, and he educated the children as well the following day. Chris Heron, also a recovered addict, who is a professional basketball player, who came from Fall River, also gave a speech to both the parents and the children. This year, we'll be hosting the Barnstable Police Department, who will educate parents by showing them confiscated drug paraphernalia and educating them so they can be on the watch for their children. Another resources that was provided was the vendors. The vendors offered additional programs and help in many different forums. We had Gosnell there, who's willing to provide counseling to anybody. And we also had basketball leagues and flag football. They were there to help as well.
Good evening. My name is Connor Levek. And once again, this year, we will be having the Seventh Grade Youth Summit, which is a day dedicated to the seventh graders from BIS. And we will be talking to them about drug issues and social issues around the community. This year will be held on Friday, March 16th, at the Cape Cod Community College. Our two speakers for this year are Robert Hackinson, who will be giving his Dynamic Influence Speech, talking to the kids about getting out of difficult situations and making the right choices when they need to make them. Another speaker will be Kevin Rosario from Gosnell of Cape Cod, who will be sharing his story and helping the kids teach them lessons. Barnstable High School Peer Leadership Class will also be there, and they will be helping the kids with certain social issues that will arise in their community and in school. Students of Barnstable High School will also be explaining the activities and clubs and sports that are around Barnstable High School every day. Fifteen nonprofits will be available to speak individually with kids during lunch and during the day at the Youth Summit. Prizes will be provided by the business and town employees, unions, and associations. The businesses that donated money or products to our investment are the JFK Memorial Trust Fund, who donated $3,500. The Caroline Fries Memorial, who donated $3,476. The Cape Cod Healthcare, who gave us a grant of $3,000 that you guys will be voting on later. And the Five Star Bus Company, they supported our transportation. And the Cape Cod Media, who gave us advertising for the event. Thank you.
I'd like to formally thank the entire council, President Stein Hilber, Vice President Crocker, and open it up to any questions, if there are any.
Thank you very much for the update and the presentation. Your group does phenomenal work. I know the members have changed from time to time, but over the years, I mean, we've been extremely proud of the work that your commission continues to do and has done. The forums are a really well-received event, very impactful with education, especially with that age group, to teach, you know, kids about the perils of addiction and drugs. So, we'll be very happy to take up the vote on the grant later tonight. Hopefully, you worked Council of Levek and got his vote. But I'd be happy to open it up to the councils. Do you have any questions or comments? Councilor Hebert?
By way of comment, thank you so much for your presentation and coming. There is a lot going on in our country, a lot going on in our environment, and a lot of very, very important issues that you're going to face. And we're very concerned about how we're leaving it for you to take over. But you give me a lot of hope and a lot of confidence that with your kind of leadership, the future's going to be good for us. So, thank you very, very much. Thanks.
Any other councils? Counselor Cullum?
Yes, I have a couple of questions, and then just wanted to -- I'll start first with the praise. So, you guys are awesome. You do an awesome job. I was -- I know I was a lot more involved a couple of years ago when I had a different job. But now, I have to sing for my supper daily, so there you go. But I'm always impressed, and I talk with Patty on a regular basis about what you're doing and how hard you work. And then I just want you to know that from this angle going down, we're really, really proud of you, because, you know, a few years ago, there was very little youthful voice on these boards and committees, and you're making such a huge contribution. And I just want to thank you for the time that it takes you, because I know there's other things you could be doing you don't really necessarily want to meet as much as you meet, but your priorities are right in line. And now, more than ever, as Matt said, it's important to hear from the youth. And it's changing things. It's changing the way this country works, and it's really cool to see. So, that said, my question is, is this the flyer that goes -- that is around Barnstable High School now? And are you distributing it to other schools as well in town, like Sturgis?
That's being commonly distributed, yes.
Okay, cool. And then what is the -- so, in the past, I know the Thursday night has been different from the Friday day, or, you know, we've differentiated between the two. So, is the Barnstable panel, Police Panel, is that only on Thursday night?
Yeah, they're coming in for Thursday night to communicate with parents or anyone in the town who's interested. And they'll answer questions on a multitude of issues.
Really cool. It's a great experience. I'm sure it will be awesome. Thank you again, you guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other counselors? All right. Great job, you guys. Keep up the good work.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, I'd like to invite up the YMCA Young Achievers. They're going to give us a program update. Welcome, everyone.
Good evening, counselors. Great to be here.
Just want to hit the green button there.
Good evening.
There you go.
Hello, everybody. Fabulous to be in front of you again. Hard to believe it's been three years since we sat before you. I'm Stacy Pugh, the President and CEO at the YMCA Cape Cod. And we are just really excited to give you an update on the Achievers Program that has come a long way in three years in having a positive impact on students at Barnstable High School. So, we're going to talk a little bit about that. I'm going to give a little bit of a program overview. And then what I think you really want to hear is the story of three of our achievers. And so, each one of them is going to be sharing their personal story and journey of going through the program for the last three years. Couple of handouts that are coming down your way and are on the screens in front of you. Just want to give you a quick overview of what the program curriculum looks like, what our framework looks like, and what the children are experiencing when they have their meetings on Monday evenings. And then there's also a lot of in-between work through volunteer projects, college tour trips, and the like. So, we have a strong focus on these five pillars: academics, college knowledge, positive relationships, life skills, and positive identity. And within each of those five pillars, you can see the areas that we focus on with our students. There are very specific drivers that help to support success in all of those five pillars. And so, below each one of the five pillars, you can see what the drivers are that we focus on in supporting the students. And then we have measurements. And we are very, very pleased to have been selected by the National YMCA to participate in a pilot our second year into this program, where we adopted the Chicago University Six to 16 Curriculum, which is a specific curriculum to help students pursue and achieve higher education, and then carry them through to graduation and into a career of their choice. So, we have students in the program who were seniors in the 2015-16 school year that we continue to follow and support with these five pillars. And so, they are sophomores in college now, which is exciting. And we just can't wait till they graduate college and achieve that career goal they have. So, the second infographic I'd like to show you is a little bit more colorful. And this one really shows the success and the measurements that we have seen the students achieve in the first two years of the program. So, we're in our third year, but these are the results from the first two years. So, you know, currently, we've been working with one high school, Barnstable High School, and we have received some demand for some other towns who are interested in having the program expanded. In particular, Dennis Yarmouth has been a focus of a school district that we are working to partner with in the future. We've served 56 teens in grades seven through 14, ages 12 to 19 years of age. And they have gone on 16 college visits. They have done nine World of Work Tours. And our percent that has been enrolled in post-secondary school is 88%. And they are the first in their family to go to college. And that is an exciting time for our students. They have volunteered over 1,000 hours in giving back service to the local community. Some of the highlights of our achievements are also in here in the infographic. I'll let you read those, because I do think it's more important for you to hear from our students and to hear their stories. But before I introduce them for their stories, I do want to say that although there are 56 kids that have been through the program, we have 50 in the program this year. No program is perfect, and no program can claim that. And we would not be being fully transparent if we didn't talk about the challenges that students still face even though they are enrolled in this program. So, while we have 31 of our students who are very clearly on track, we have 15 that are still struggling because of their family situations. And I'll give you an example. We have one young lady, 16 years old, whose mother was incarcerated. She was very successful when she was in the program and her mother was incarcerated. But when her mother was released from prison, she had her daughter given back to her. And she removed her from Barnstable, moved to another state, and has been living in a homeless shelter. She's been kicked out of the homeless shelter because of the actions of her mother. So, we don't save every child and every teen, but we are staying in connection with her and hoping that we can keep her in the right position, because she was an all-A student. So, it is difficult. The families that we are working with are struggling, and we believe in their students. We won't give up on those 15 students that are struggling. But there is a reality that they are struggling. We've had six students drop out of the program, and we had three that have moved and one that took a year off. So, we're proud of the ones that we have still in the program. And we're recruiting new students, but we aren't leaving the others behind. I'd like to introduce Caroline first, to tell her story about her experience in the program.
Good evening. My name is Caroline Asmento. And this is actually the essay I chose to write for and submit to my colleges. This was my final college essay that I submitted. It was the end of my sophomore year when I first heard of the program. A family friend told my mom that a doctor was recruiting students to take part in an organization to learn about college and have a chance to win scholarships at the end of senior year. How could any student pass off on an offer like that? As a child of immigrants and a first-generation college student, I am pretty much on my own with figuring out the procedures to plan my future. I was fortunate enough to be able to join the group in the beginning of my junior year. This is where my journey began with the YMCA Teen Achievers. Before I joined the program, I had no knowledge of the process that goes into applying to college. Now, I have a group of mentors by my side whenever I need them, available to help with any situation. These mentors, along with several guest speakers, have taught me about numerous different careers, life lessons like stepping out of my comfort zone, and also providing valuable advice. These advisors have helped me push myself to new limits, and I am forever grateful for each and every one of them. People may comment on my personality being calming and quiet. Those who really know me know that inside, I hold a burning desire to succeed that wars with determination and desire. It's all about stability and management, I learned, learning about the different ways to manage my time, set goals, and learning to believe in myself has made me more comfortable with the idea of college. By going on many trips to different colleges and not only visiting large schools like Boston University, but also small local schools like Cape Cod Community College, I now know that many options -- the many options that I have to choose from and which ones that are fit for me. I have now discovered where my comfort level is and what environment would be best for me. Being in the Achievers Program has been an incredible advantage. I am able to learn something new every week through this program. It has also helped me to become more involved in my community. I will never forget the time I volunteered at the Martin Luther King Day of Service and stuffed tote bags with essentials such as soaps, toothbrushes, and toothpaste so that people who are less fortunate could be provided with necessities. I remember feeling proud and joyful in that I was able to help my community. Without this program, I would never have been able to participate in many of the volunteering opportunities I have attended. Volunteering has become something that is important to me and is now part of something I want to continue to do for the rest of my life. This program has taught me the importance of giving back to the community and how giving a little can go a long way. Ever since I joined the Achievers, it has brought me many gifts and has given me a new perspective on life. I am looking forward to continuing to be in this program until I've graduated from college. I aspire to continue on with the wonderful people I have met so far, and I hope to continue to meet new ones along the way. Although the program is only grade six through 16, I have a desire to be able to come back to volunteer and help the program and all the students who will be part of the program when the time comes. All students should be exposed to this program so that they too can acquire all the help and benefits. The YMCA Teen Achievers Program has helped me get so far, and I know it will only continue to add to my life. I will always be thankful for everything this program has provided for me. And that's it. Thank you.
Hi, my -- my name is Razelle Joseph. I'm also reading my college essay. In the second grade, my best friend couldn't come to my birthday party because my address was in the newspaper as the location of an alleged crime scene. My mother had stabbed her father with a fork. How rude, considering some people, myself included, would do anything just to have their father alive. This was not the first, nor the last occasion where my mother has caused some sort of catastrophe in my life. However, through all that, it has shaped me into the person I am today. Custody battles have caused me to be in and out of foster care at a young age. After my father passed away when I was five, my paternal grandmother was given full custody of me, but that didn't take my mother out of the picture. I went through years of physical, verbal, and emotional abuse before I realized my mother suffers from a mental disorder, schizophrenia. This unfortunately caused her to be in and out of prison. Exposed to so much as a young girl, I was forced to grow up fast, and I spent a lot of time alone. As I got older, I searched for a mother figure in all the women in my life. I wanted so badly to be loved the way I saw other mothers love their children. Eventually, I felt as though I no longer needed one, and what I did need was a mentor. My family experienced a lot of loss, and my grandmother's reaction was deeply rooted in her Haitian culture. She started to believe everyone around her, including me, was practicing voodoo on her and trying to kill her. When I was 13, I started to feel as though I was a burden on those around me. I lived along with my grandmother as she had kicked everyone out the house. Eventually, she too left, leaving me by myself. Without any adult figure at home, I had no source of transportation or any food. I relied heavily on school so I would have something to eat and adults to help me. Eventually, I mean, excuse me, unfortunately, if I missed the bus, I was out of luck, and I had no way of getting to school and nothing to eat for that day. Things started to change for the better once my aunt stepped into my life. She told me I create my own universe, which is only an echo of me. In other words, my perspective and my attitude towards everything in life will be my life. I woke up every day with negative energy because I felt victimized to things I had no control over. She helped me realize that the energy I give off is the energy I attract. This took me time to come to terms with, but in turn, I feel as though that makes me more empathetic to those who feel as though they can't. I've always been that person everyone comes to for advice, and even though sometimes it can feel burdening, I truly believe it is a blessing to be able to help someone in a deep, meaningful way. I would never be who I am today without all the hardships I have dealt time and time again. This has helped me learn to trust myself and truly love who I am. Thank you.
And Tim?
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Tim Fiallo. I'm a senior at Barnstable High School, and I was also appointed as the President of the Achievers. A little bit about myself. I've been in the Achievers since it began. Mr. John Reed, through my church, he basically recruited me, and I started attending the meetings. And I was like, hey, this is a good time. I enjoy what I'm doing, and I'm learning. So, I stuck with it, and now I'm in my senior year. This program has given me countless opportunities that I would have no ability to even reach if it wasn't for this program. I've visited schools that I could have never, ever, ever gone to because of simple transportation issues. I've helped out in the community, given back to the homeless. I've done so many countless things through this program, and it's really been a blessing, not only to myself, but to my family, and hopefully, to the community around me. not only to myself but to my family and hopefully to the community around me. I'm also going to be sharing my college essay tonight. I've faced a lot in my life even though I'm young. Surgeries, family troubles, and where I'm from and how I was raised all contribute to my identity and making me who I am. I came from a broken home where my mother lives in Section Eight housing in Yarmouth. My father, a black Brazilian immigrant, left us to go live in Florida with a different woman. And ever since I was young, I had a huge sense of responsibility for myself and for my family. My mother, a white Brazilian immigrant, has worked multiple jobs her whole life just to get by and due to this, I lived in my grandparents' house where they could take care of me and supervise me. This unique relationship I have with my grandparents, who are my parental figures, but also, well, this unique relationship is special that I have with my grandparents. But I also have my biological mother as a role model. My grandmother is retired due to a physical disability and my grandfather is the pastor of a small church in our town. And because of this, we've never been financially secure. We definitely believe that our faith and hard work is what helps keep us together and I've been working since the summer of my eighth grade year cleaning houses. In two thousand and sixteen, I started working at the YMCA as a camp counselor and an after-school enrichment teacher. Hard work and understanding the value of each and every individual thing has been a huge part of me. Another unique aspect of me is that I'm a first-generation Brazilian-American and my mother and grandparents immigrated here. Now I'll also be the first in my family to go to college for more than an associate's degree. I've always tried to work my hardest, but English is my second language and I've had several interferences in my schoolwork, including multiple concussions and surgeries and scary times in my family due to my grandparents' diminishing health. My grandmother has always been a huge driving force in my life and she's always emphasized how important it is to do my best and take advantage of all opportunities presented before me. And she's raised me this way because she values education, which she was never able to have. In Brazil, at the time she was growing up, it was more important for women to work and know how to raise kids and cook and clean than to have a formal education. She never got past the third grade. But this does not take away from how amazing of a woman she is. The summer of two thousand and fifteen, I had a serious major operation, so I lost that entire summer and it affected me up until probably December of that year. In and out of school that year, my grades tanked that year. That was a rough year. But all these experiences created in me an understanding of how important hard work is and how you should always have faith and be resilient because things will get better. I'm also very proud of my family, where I'm from, what we have overcome, and the future success that I know will come to us. And one of my long-term goals is helping to get my mother out of Section Eight housing. Growing up with this awareness and knowing how tough it is financially on my grandparents' and mother also grew in me a sense of responsibility to give back to them. So I want to thank you for listening to my story and thank you for having me come out.
So I'll wrap up, but I can't wrap up without saying that Tim recently was admitted to Springfield College and will be going in the fall.
I ended up applying to ten schools. I've heard back from four so far and I've gotten accepted by all four. I've been accepted by Quinipiac, Westfield State, Springfield, and Gordon College. Springfield is giving me a sixty-four thousand dollar scholarship over four years. The YMCA is, this program is literally the only reason I ever went out to Springfield College. I had, I'd never heard of it before. I visited the campus through this program and I was like, wow, I like it here. I ended up applying and I got accepted into their criminal justice program, which I've always wanted to do. I also got accepted into Westfield with a sixty thousand dollar scholarship and Gordon with another sixty-four thousand dollar scholarship. So thank you.
So we're incredibly proud of the success that we are experiencing and the obstacles that our students are overcoming. You can clearly hear some of the challenges that they face in their everyday lives and I just want to say how proud I am of all three of you and I can't wait to watch you continue to succeed. So I'll just wrap it up by just saying that one of my favorite optimists is Simon Sinek and Simon Sinek says, "Let's stop talking about what we do and start talking about what we believe." And at the why we believe in nurturing the potential of every child and teen, we believe in the potential of Tim, Caroline, and any student at Barnstable High that commits to being achievers. We believe in our volunteers that give back and provide support to this program to ensure its long-term success. And finally, we are grateful to the donors and advocates who also believe in social responsibility to support this program by giving back so that money is not an obstacle to participation. And this is what's making the incredible difference for our achievers. Thank you to the town council for believing in the why and helping to advocate this program to get off the ground three years ago. You should be very, very proud of what you have helped to get started. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the update. It's hard to believe that three years has gone by already and appreciate you being honest about, you know, you can't save everyone and that's certainly frustrating and, but without the program, you know, that number could easily double, so. And I want to thank you for sharing all of your stories with us tonight. You know, everyone has challenges they face, some more than others certainly, but that's, you know, not what defines you. It's how you respond to that, how you overcome it, but the hard work you put in to get yourself in a place where you can have success that you're sharing with us tonight, so really hats off to you. And I got an email this afternoon, I think Stacy was also copied on it, from a longtime teacher in town. She's retired now. My daughter actually had her for kindergarten, but she does a lot of work with the program now and it's really become a focus of her retirement, but she, in the email, she was just saying what inspiration all of you are to everyone in the program and around it. So again, hats off, you know, to all of your hard work and keep it up. Very proud of you. Open it up to the council. Any comments or questions? Counselor Cullen?
So I knew three years ago when we were sitting in that room over there that this was a special program and I just knew we had the right people around that table to make it happen and I am so proud of you guys. It's amazing and this is just the beginning. Like, this is just the beginning. You're forging forward and then you'll always be able to count on Stacy and the why wherever you go because you know how the why works and you know they're there for support. But seriously, the thing about life is you've got to always move forward, even if it's incremental, even if it's just incremental. Don't stand still. Always dream, always push, every single day, every single day, even if it's just a little bit. Because once you stagnate, you can't do that, you know? I'm so proud of you. What an awesome story. You guys are going to be awesome, you know? Just keep moving forward. It's going to be a really, really beautiful journey for you through your lives, you know? So, and I applaud you for the commitment it takes to go there every week, the time it takes away from family and school and all the other pressures you have at your age. You're doing the right thing. You really are. And thank you, Stacy, for the why. All of the contributions that you guys make, it's amazing. I knew this program would be great for Barnstable. Thank you.
Counselor Beaton Bender?
Thank you all. You've had me tearing up a number of times. When I became a parent, I became, sort of you naturally become a parent to all children. It's really hard not to feel responsibility to all of you. I really thank you for your honesty and your grandmother said, "You create your own universe." And the thing is, is that some people come into universes that have more challenging situations than others. And you have done amazingly well considering some of the challenges and the adversity that you've faced. What I will say to that is that thank goodness for programs like the why and other adults in this community and we've highlighted some of them in past meetings and will continue to do so moving forward. Thank goodness for those adults and those organizations that are in place to help you, but do remember too that this comes from within you. I mean, you are making your own destiny. And I will also say because of your adversity and because of the challenges that you've had, it may not seem like much consolation, but you are a much stronger person than those who haven't had to deal with that kind of adversity. So you will be the winners in this life, right? You will forge your path. You will be amazing. So thank you so much for coming. Really appreciate it and thank you to the why. Thanks.
Counselor Dagwan?
Yes, I just wanted to mention that this program was brought to the council by Counselor Cullen and I want to thank her for thinking about the youth and continuing to find programs that support youth. And Stacy as well for jumping on board with this and really helping out. And I didn't want to mention Renee King, who actually runs the Achievers program and these are like her kids. She's got fifty of them, but believe me, she treats them like they are her kids. She feeds them. She finds transportation. She does whatever she can do to help them overcome any obstacles that are in their way preventing them from the challenges that are ahead, their academic challenges. What I like about Renee is that Renee sets high standards. I've traveled with these students on some of the college tours and as an adult, they're noisy on the bus, I mean, two, three hours riding with them and perhaps listening to some of their music. But I think the fact that she sets high standards for them, not letting them give up on themselves. Find your, you know, your full potential. And she encourages and promotes giving back to the community. That's a big issue for her as well in getting these students involved. And she brings in experts from around the Cape, police officers, doctors, lawyers, you name it, they've all come in and talked to these students who are part of the Achievers program. And I think the main thing she wants from them is self-respect. Okay, your life is what you make it and you not only represent yourself, you represent your family as well when you're out there. And so, you know, you want to keep that in the forefront. And I think also making them understand that they are role models. You are role models. There are young people who are looking up to you now in your community, brothers and sisters, and who face the same kind of challenges that you are having. And I've heard these stories, they're heartbreaking to find, you've got students who are A students, get selected to a college and can only attend the first semester or two semesters, there's just not enough funds for them to continue on. And this program is designed to watch students from high school to career, through college to a job, and I think that's what makes it special as well. So I just wanted to say that I'm proud of all of you as well, when I saw you this afternoon come in here, Caroline and Razelle and Tim. I was touched by it because I know you. I know a little bit about you. I know your personalities and I know that you'll go far and many will do, many members of the group will do the same. So keep up the good work and hang in there. Stacy, again, thank you for the support that you give these young people and trying to help them find jobs as well, you know, at the why, part-time jobs or whatever you can offer them, at the camp and different places. But it also takes funds and I noticed we have the annual Achievers benefit. And the first one we had, I think we had most of our counselors came, attended, and I think it was like forty bucks maybe, I think it was. Well, this one is coming up in May, May seventeenth, and it is ninety-five dollars. Now I know that many of the counselors last time who attended and some who didn't attend bought tickets to help other people attend, help these young people's parents to come or relatives or grandparents to attend or brother or sister. So I hope that, again, when this comes up, that, you know, we will all pull together and do whatever we can to continue to support this group as well as our youth, the Youth Commission and the things that they're doing as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Vice President Crocker?
I'd just like to say, Ms. President, it's the finest kickoff we've had for quite some time for one of our programs. We started with Barnstable Youth Commission, did a fabulous job, guys, and we're finishing here with the Achievers. This is the fabric of our neighborhood, you know? Good stuff.
Absolutely. Counselor Hebert, you have another comment?
Thank you very much. Thank you. Your presentations are absolutely awesome and what you all have in common is a tremendous amount of commitment and passion for being successful and you're reaching for that challenge. I just want to say again what Counselor said about Mother Jennifer. Three years ago, when the program was never heard of before, she came and she made it very, very clear that this was going to be a project that was going to be successful and that we had to support. And so she showed her passion and her commitment. And here, again, to sit here three years later and seeing what you're doing is just absolutely awesome. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? All right, well, thank you so much, all of you, for being here and to the Youth Commission as well.
Point of information, Stacy, could you update us as people are accepted to colleges and where they go? This, your banquet is on a meeting night for us and it's at Willow Bend, so I would love to go to this. I'll send in my, I'll pay for somebody else to go, but I would love to be there next year maybe if we could, maybe we can get together on dates where the town council doesn't meet because we would love to come and support. Yeah. Thank you.
All right. We're going to move back into our regular meeting. We're going to go back to public comment. So if there's anyone would like to speak, please sign in, state your name, and please limit your time to three minutes.
My name is John Vier. I live at thirty-two Columbia Avenue in Austin's Mills. A year and a half ago, a neighbor placed a chicken coop ten feet off her property line, which placed it thirty feet away from the side of our home. Within days, I noticed holes on the side of our house. We have one of those old Cape Cod basements with the four-foot crawl space with dirt. I tried plugging the holes with stones, crushed stones, stone dust. Nothing worked. The rats continued digging into our crawl space. After a couple of months, I contacted and wrote letters to the town manager, animal control officer, and the board of health. Only the board of health replied. Mary Beth McKenzie left the business card on our door. That was on January twenty-fourth of two thousand and seventeen, was over a year ago. At the time, Mary Beth made the neighbor make some provisions, like keeping the chicken feed in a metal container and away from the coop. I asked her if I could make her move it and Mary Beth said no. I sent an email to Mary Beth nine days ago, writing her that the problem still existed. She replied last night with an email telling me to contact her this morning by phone. I called her at eight-thirty this morning and asked her why it took nine days to respond. She said she was on vacation. She said she stopped by the resident's house yesterday and everything looked fine at the coop. Everything was clean. I asked her how long you gave her to clean up, from the time you called to the time you arrived. She told me she couldn't answer that. It was confidential and I'm paraphrasing, but what I got was, I'm not going to tell you if I called her at eight-forty-five and got there at three o'clock in the afternoon. I told her you gave the owner too much time to clean everything up before coming. I was watching her clean. I have pictures of her disposing across the street at the corner of Columbia Avenue and Webster Avenue. There's a town of Barnstable vacant lot there. It's posted, no dumping, three thousand dollar fine. In fact, I'm the one that contacted the town and told them to put up that sign because she was continuing dumping for years. You may say, well, anybody can dump there. How do I know it's hers? It's chicken coop eggs. The rats are eating the chicken feed and nesting and breeding in our crawl space. Our family is in a no-win situation until the rat food source is removed and eliminated completely. In twenty-two years of living in our home, we've never seen a rat, never mind dealing with a crisis like this. Our community abuts Race Lane and Route One Forty-Nine. It's called Connecticut Estates. All the avenues in the community is named after Connecticut, Willimantic, Harvard, where we live, Columbia Avenue. Every lot in our community is less than a half an acre. We're such a tight community, we know when a neighbor is in their backyard. We can hear them, see what they're doing, everything. It's not a place for farm animals, such as chickens and ducks. I'm asking the town council to reexamine the chicken coops in this town or at least provide restrictions on these shed-type buildings, like setbacks from neighbors' homes and property lines. We live in a beautiful part of the world and the chicken coop is adding to the rat population crisis on Cape instead of helping it. I'm also trying to figure out what Massachusetts building codes I'm also trying to figure out what Massachusetts building codes support these chicken coops. I found no building code in the book that supports these buildings. The only one that came close to supporting these buildings is the CMR seven-eighty-one-oh-five-point-two. It's the Work Exempt Permit Code, you're probably familiar with it. But in the code, it states, "The building must be a one-story structure, used as a tool or a storage shed, or a child's playhouse, or similar uses, and cannot exceed two hundred square feet." I'm sure any one of you know that a livestock building is not similar to a chicken coop.
If you could just take thirty seconds to sum up, and then I think maybe the assistant town manager may get your information.
I am, I am finished. I would like just to sum up by saying, I'd like to say in closing, that all of you sitting there love your community, just like I do, and rats should not be a part of our beautiful town. And I'd like to leave some photos for you, if I may.
Yeah, you can hand it to the clerk. If you want to leave your contact information, maybe with our assistant town manager, so we can follow up with you and maybe with the building commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening, I'm Susan Roebach, I live in Centerville. And before I start, what I was going to say, I just wanted to say that I was so incredibly impressed with both the Youth Commission and the Teen Achievers Program, that the thing that really struck me on the Youth Commission thing was, at one of their events, they were doing training on how to get out of difficult situations. Lots of times, we tell kids, don't do this, but we don't help them figure out how to not do it. And I have a very good friend, and I feel like she might have been your daughter's kindergarten teacher, who is very active in the Teen Achievers Program. And so I'm always hearing about what's going on, and I knew it was a great program, but boy, this was just, blew you away. I'm here really to talk about Vineyard Wind. Like many of you, I'm sure, I was anti-Cape Wind, still am. And I think that, as I read about and hear about Cape Wind, that it's incumbent on us to support a good project when we can. You know, I've heard from some people, or and I've read, that some people think that the project's going to resurrect Cape Wind, and that Cape Wind will be coming back. And I don't think that that's the case at all. And I think that a successful project in Vineyard Sound, which is where we all said, oh, that's where it should be, would be such a really good example of why we don't need Nantucket Sound for wind development. And it would show everybody that we had a lot of good reasons for opposing Cape Wind, not just that the rich people didn't want to look at it. So I really would hope that you all would seriously look at negotiating an agreement that will bring, move the project forward and bring resources to the town, because I think that there are some good long-term, it sounds like there are some good long-term prospects for the town to get some revenue from it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, good to see you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hi, good evening, I'm Elizabeth Warfane, Hyannis Main Street Business Improvement District Executive Director, and I just want to thank our collaborating partners with, you know, helping us have a successful vote. We just, this week, had a vote to renew the Business Improvement District another five years by the property owners. And we want to thank the town and the chamber and the civic association for being good partners, and the town has been great, and Jim was there, very uneventful. So, anyway, I'm kidding, but very interesting, and we are looking forward to a fabulous next five years, because we've been around since nineteen ninety-nine, and as you might know, there've been a lot of changes in the downtown, and we are a unified voice that tries to bring the town-to-town to a level that where it would be vibrant year-round. And sometimes that's painful, all change is painful, because it means something new and different, and it could be threatening. But I think altogether, you know, people are really starting to resonate about the great, exciting things that could happen to Hyannis. It's not, it shouldn't be a fight, it really should just be a movement. So I want to thank the town council for their support. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close public comment, and the counselor responds to public comment. Counselor Hebert.
Thank you. John, I'm liaison to the Health Department, and I consider rats very unhealthy for our community and for our neighborhoods. The old saying that good fences make good neighbors, rats don't care about that, they go under it, they go on top of it, they crawl along it, they think it's a highway, so that's not the solution. There are chicken coops that are well-cared-for, well-maintained, that don't have a rat infestation because they're well taken care of. So if you leave food out, you're going to get, you're going to get critters of all kinds coming in. So we're going to continue working on this, because it's a serious problem, it's a health problem, and we're not going to just pretend it's not happening, so we'll keep working for you, okay? Thank you.
Counselor Flores?
Just a comment, thank you, Elizabeth, for that review of the vote yesterday, and I just want to commend really all of the different chambers in terms of really making Hyannis as well as the rest of the community as effective and as inviting as it possibly can be for a business kind of environment, because it's critical, not only to the folks who live in the town, but also to the tourists that come through, because we are a tourist economy, so, thank you.
Counselor Levecq?
Thank you, Mr. President. John, I am your town counselor, you are in my precinct. If you could, just go to the website, and you'll see my email address and phone number there.
Cynthia gave it to me.
Okay, great.
She just gave it to me yesterday, so I didn't have a chance to correspond with you.
That's fine, but I want your contact information, so I can follow up with you, if that's all possible. Very good, I appreciate that, thank you.
Any other counselors? Counselor Cullen?
Yes, just a quick comment on Sue Roebach's comments about the kids. I think with the Youth Commission, one of the things that always is intriguing is that those kids are thinking as kids, what could help them the most, as opposed to the talking heads telling the kids what they need to hear. So the solutions become that much more relevant in our world when they're talking with each other and finding out what the missing piece is for self-esteem or whatever. And that's why the Youth Commission and the Achievers Program are so important, is that the youthful voice is what's missing. We're so used to talking at people, we don't talk to each other anymore, right, and have conversations. And then a question about the bid, so yeah, the bid was reauthorized, it was not uneventful, it was a bit of sarcasm. I wondered if there might be an opportunity at some point to have an ombudsman or something, and this isn't, obviously, isn't a talk and call-and-answer sort of a situation here, but maybe you and I could talk later, Elizabeth, about the people who are really not on board with the bid, and how we could loop them in, maybe they need to have someone different to speak to, a different non-ombudsman sort of a position to work out whatever concerns they might have. So maybe you and I can talk about that in a later date. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Counselor Bean Bender?
To Sue Roebach's comments, thank you, Sue, for bringing that up. I just, I agree with you fully, it's apples and oranges, Cape Wind and Vineyard Wind. And I would encourage the public to attend the open houses and the info sessions that Vineyard Wind is offering over the next month, they've already started, they're reaching out, they're trying to be available, so if you have questions and you want to find out what the truth is, or find out facts, I should say, you should reach out to them. And I encourage everyone to take advantage of that opportunity, so that, you know, when it comes time to make decisions on these things, everyone has an informed opinion. So thank you very much for bringing that up.
Anyone else? No, all right. We're going to move into Town Manager Communications, Town Manager Mark Els.
Good evening, Mark Els, Town Manager. Before I begin my report, and I know the Vieiras are leaving, I have discussed this with the building commissioner and the Health Department, we are aware of this. I have no excuses or knowledge of why this may have been going on since the first complaint, but Health is dealing with it, the building commissioner is on top of this, and there have been commitments made by the neighbor relevant to the chicken coops and the care of that, and hiring professional exterminators, et cetera. So, but we should continue to communicate with the Vieiras on this. Town Managers Report for the period of February sixteenth through March first. We are proceeding with the tasks in the budget action calendar for FY nineteen as scheduled. You all have a copy of the FY nineteen capital budget and FY nineteen through twenty-three capital improvement plan. It's been submitted to the town council, posted on the website, and you can find that on the web page under the Finance Division, FY nineteen capital improvements. If you don't have a copy of it and you want to look on our website and view what's going to be before the town council. The orders will be read in first reading, March fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, so that we can commence review of the capital budget in the first meeting in April. In response to the presentation provided to Town Council at your February fifteenth meeting regarding the proposed reorganization and amendments to the Administrative Code, I've attached the current organizational structure for FY two thousand and eighteen and the proposed structure for two thousand and nineteen. As I reviewed that last meeting, I think that was the only specific request by Counselor Schnepp, I believe, but I've given it to all of you certainly, so you can have one next to the other and take a look. We are also available between now and your next meeting certainly, if you have any questions relevant to that item. That item's coming up for a first read later in the agenda. We continue working with the Mass Department of Fish and Wildlife, USGS, and DEP Water Supply staff regarding the future potential water supply wells proposed for the two-hundred-and-fifty-acre parcel northeast of the Hyannis water system. We are moving forward still on that, so I don't have anything to the detriment to report. We're finalizing the sampling agreements that, where we have DEP committed to actually doing the sampling and utilizing their lab and their expenses to cover that. We were hoping it would be a little quicker, but things move slowly sometimes, but we are progressing on that, we're also progressing relevant to the modeling that they're going to do out there. So, and we're not off schedule with what we, where we thought we would be, but I was hoping I'd get the quality information, so that that's really a key point in making some decisions relevant to this. So I'll keep you advised as we progress. I received, I guess it's an anticipation of the storm that is supposed to arrive, mid-morning tomorrow, and lasts for about twenty-four hours, and maybe bring winds, seventy-plus mile an hour gusts. We received a notice today from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Division of Marine Fisheries, and they've closed all the shell fishing effective March first, two thousand, sunset March first, two thousand and eighteen, which was today. Once the storm goes through, I'm sure they'll reopen, but I just wanted to let you know, I just received that today, as for all shell fishing. Staff conducted a public information session attended by over fifty people on February twenty-eighth regarding the process of disposal of the twenty-three tax-possession parcels and to ask questions, allowed the public to ask questions. It was recorded and will be posted on the town's website to allow people to view that and review what we're doing. It was a very well-attended meeting, actually. I listened to most of the presentation by Dave Anthony. The proposal to purchase the lands by interested parties are due by two PM on March twenty-eighth, as outlined in the RFP, which can be found on our website. And if the public has any questions, they can contact Dave Anthony, who's the Director of our Property and Risk Management, at five oh eight eight six two four six five two. The team of our staff from the town in support of the airport's request for a proposal for the K-Mot Plaza continue to meet on a regular basis with them to prepare the RFP, develop the form of lease, and other critical documents associated with the eventual offer of a lease for the twenty-seven-acre K-Mot Plaza to a future developer. Because of the critical role that this parcel plays in our town-wide development and planning within the one-thirty-two corridor, and in providing meaningful and predictable financial support to the airport operations, the team has met with the FAA, a number of consultants, and land attorneys to make sure that the process is fully vetted. This stage of the RFP development is coming to a close, the actual issuing of the RFP could be within the next forty-five days. We are proceeding with the hiring process for the position of Chief of Police. I was asked a question by Counselor Flores, but I've also, I also said to you that I would continue to update you, so I've provided you a timeline relevant to that hiring process, and I've also enclosed the certification handbook relevant to civil service hires, though it's a general guide for you to take a look at. I've been receiving a number of questions and inquiries about this process, and when people may comment or participate or provide support to candidates. At this point, just so you know where we are, we've gone, they have gone through the assessment center process that's required under this type of civil service hire. We expect to see the results of that, though the results are out to the individuals who participated. I do not know the results, I will not receive the results until March fifteenth. The results will order the candidates based on the ranking within the assessment center, and I will have the opportunity to proceed after an initial screening of those three candidates with the top three. And so, at this point, I don't know who will be coming to me. As far as the top three candidates, this has been an internal review, and it has been the way that it reads in the document, but it is also the way that we've done the process. It would be a chief's position, except we did it internally, so it wouldn't be, because we're trying to fill that, and then two levels below that. So in our case, it is the deputy chiefs and the lieutenants. If, to answer Counselor Flores, I believe his question was, if this went out, would it go through the same process? It would go through the same process, but I believe it would include chiefs and then two levels below. And other departments can be different, what they call those two levels, but it would be two levels below. It would only be civil service departments. So it wouldn't be opened up to the whole world. But at this point, again, it's internal, I expect to see that by mid-March, I expect to proceed with the process. We do have a survey out there to gather information. I have begun discussions with various groups. I've been over the high school, and I'm going to sit with the, you know, I'm going to meet with the Youth Commission, I believe, in the next, at their next meeting, to gather their input. Talking with student council, but it was very important to me to speak also with just the kids who aren't engaged, because their opinions are just as important. So I'm working with Pat Clark on that. I'm going to be going over to the senior center, I'm going to be reaching out to the civic associations, I've been getting lots of calls and emails. I'm really just asking, you can tell that we have a very rigid process that we will need to follow here, but certainly I want to hear from the community on what's important to them for their next chief, because truly, it's the community's chief, I just get to select the person. And so it's critical that I hear from them. I just get to select the person, and so it's critical that I hear from them. So, that's the update at this point. Please ask questions or, you know, whatever I can do to help clarify what questions you might be receiving, I will do so. Bill Cole is also available to assist me. Lynn Poyant is helping me with the public outreach and certainly the gathering the information from the survey that we have online. Town of Barceville Planning Department is cooperating with the Land Acquisition and Preservation Committee, updating its open space and recreation plan that was last adopted in 2010. The plan allows the community to identify and evaluate goals, challenges, opportunities, and priorities for open space protection, land management, and the provision of recreational opportunities. Planning for our town's green infrastructure of water, land, forest, wildlife habitat, parks, recreation areas, and trails is important to our economic future, community identity, and quality of life. The plan is developed to comply with the guidance from the Massachusetts Division of Conservation Services and will be submitted to that agency for approval. An approved plan is necessary for the town to qualify for certain grant opportunities provided by the Commonwealth. It's also an important opportunity to reassess community needs and priorities for open space protection and the provision of recreational opportunities. A draft of the plan is currently available on the town's website, and a public hearing on the plan will be held on March 8th, 6:00 PM at Town Hall. The draft plan was supported by input from a community survey, three community stakeholder meetings, and input from town staff in multiple departments, and it is currently under review by relevant town boards, committees, and commissions. Comment on the draft plan can be submitted to our Principal Planner, Anna Brigham, and I've given you her email through March 12th. I have Elizabeth Jenkins here if anybody has specific questions at this time about that plan. And then finally, we've continued our discussions on Vineyard Wind regarding their proposed wind farm installation and the potential to landfall in Barnstable or Yarmouth and connect to substations in Barnstable. They've requested two areas of town support, one relevant to a zoning exemption petition that they filed with the Department of Public Utilities, and the other for us to enter into negotiations for a host-community agreement, assuming that some portion of what they're proposing to do, whether it be substations or the physical landfall of a line, would come into the town of Barnstable. At this point, we continue to agree to continue to discuss this proposal with Vineyard Wind. I point this out, and I've provided you all with a letter that our residents will receive tomorrow that was sent out by Vineyard Wind. I found that out today at my meeting with Vineyard Wind. It is a letter that discusses their meeting that will be held at our high school, and I believe the meeting will take place on Monday, March 12th, at 5:30 in the auditorium of Barnstable High School. And it's, I believe it's an informational meeting relevant to their proposed project. I also included a map in here, just so if you're trying to remember where they're running their lines, you know, and I'm unclear. I am in discussions with the town of Yarmouth, but it seems like both landfalls, two in Yarmouth, one in Barnstable, are still in play here. I think in my discussions with Yarmouth, I don't know where they're at in discussions with Vineyard Wind at this point, so I can only speak for the fact that we will continue our discussions. Charlie McLaughlin plays a critical role in advising me on this and will continue to do so, given his history in past-related issues. So, if anybody has any questions, you may be getting questions by your constituents. Certainly, this landing in Barnstable's at Coval's Beach and then runs north, so, you know, you should certainly be aware of that, and, you know, we will try to advise you. We do not have all the answers to this. We are gathering the information as it comes in, and based on this, obviously, daily we gather information, because this arrived today. So, that ends my overview for this evening. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mark. Any Councilor questions or comments? Councilor Beedenbender?
Hey, Mark. Thanks. Two questions for you. One is first regarding the Chief of Police. Just a point of clarification, so there is a point system, but it sounds that, it sounds like that is not the final decision-maker, that someone could score higher points, but at the end of the day, there is that personal subjectivity that comes in and weighs in so that things like involvement in community leadership in the field can come into play in the decision. Is that correct?
It is. My understanding of the process, having not gone through this particular hiring process before, is that it is more rigid than that, though. So, we will have one, two, three. You, I will, I, as the ultimate, you know, person reviewing this and making a recommendation, and we will need to bring this before Town Council to be ratified, will review the first candidate and the second and the third. It could be more than that, but that's what we're looking at. If somebody gets ruled out along the way before we, you know, if number two gets ruled out for some reason, when we, we're going to do another step in the evaluation relevant to, you know, the candidates, then we would go to the fourth, and so we would start this process with three. If I'm not going to take the first, I have to explain why. There is an appeal process to the state relevant to the first and then the second, which can overturn my decision. So, this is a very rigid process that must be followed strictly, and that's a simple explanation of it.
Thank you.
Yes.
I have one other question. It's in regards to the open space and recreation plan. So, it was interesting, I had a conversation with BLT, the other date Barnstable Land Trust, sorry, and had a great conversation with them, but it was interesting that they were talking about priority setting. They're in this process of priority setting for land acquisition, so on and so forth. And what I was, what I suggested or I hoped for was that there would be really good communication between BLT and the town and what the town is setting as priorities for open space and the town setting a vision for what we want to do and knowing sort of what needs are heading our way in the next five to 10 years. Let's say it's a, you know, a pumping station or something like that, that we sort of, we can somehow work in concert with them or help advise them where they can be a partner with us in what we're trying to accomplish in open space.
Okay. I, I think that, I hope that we have that relationship.
That's what I'm hoping, too.
Yes.
That's what I'm just asking.
I, I, I think it already exists.
Okay.
I think that some of the recent discussions that I have been having about asset management have raised red flags to people. And what, the flag that's been raised is I'm asking a basic question. What is the purpose of the parcel?
Right.
So, if it's conservation, if it's resource protection, if it's this parcel that Town Hall sits on, that's clear why we have that. In reviewing the inventory, we have many, many pieces of property that we can't answer that question yet. So, we're going to go through a very thoughtful process, and I think because I, because that's been raised, a lot of people have come to me and said, are you proceeding with wholesale of our open space? And of course, we wouldn't do that. The investment that we've made to protect our natural resources is a key to the mission of our Town Council, and that's the same message that it's always been. So, we're going to go through this. We're going to look at these parcels very thoughtfully. I think that the Asset Management Committee and certainly their coordination and leadership on this has helped us to focus right in on parcels that we really never intended to acquire. We got them through tax title. So, it wasn't something that we started out saying, oh, this is something that we need to protect a resource or to cite some future needed municipal area. But even then, we've gone through each of those and said, is there a purpose for it? Could we put a pump station there? Is it upgraded of a sensitive embayment so that we wouldn't want to see development, which we might add nitrogen load? So, every time in this process, and you're more than happy to sit down with us, and we'll share it with all of you certainly in any form of workshop or other, but we're going to go through a very thoughtful process. There's actually a formal disposal process where we have to bring all of these internally before our own town. We go to Conservation, we go to DPW, so that if they need it as a drainage parcel, if they needed it for a future pump station or related to water supply, we would tag that and say, no, we need to keep this. We have a purpose for it. So, go to BLT. BLT, in coordination with us, has always tried to assist in that way, and they've had, I think, a great partnership with us. I got to speak at their annual meeting this year. I reassured them that that's our intent still. Don't panic, but we are going to go through this exercise, because there are a lot of parcels out there that we can't say what the purpose is. So.
All right. Thank you very much.
Any other Councilors? Councilor Hebert?
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Two, I'm going to talk about electricity. The old saying, we live better with electricity, but one, we talk about the wind project. I think we have to look at the big picture, and the big picture is that we're in trouble environmentally. If we keep burning coal and oil, what it's doing to our oceans is more than tragic. Our oceans are in deep trouble, and so we have to protect those. So, using renewable power, I hope that we do everything we can to remove stumbling blocks, and I, you know, everybody would like everything to be the same as it was before, but things change. So, I hope that we can keep a very open mind as a town, and as Sue Roback said very, very clearly, people were very much against the former wind project, but I hope that we can keep an open mind on this and see if they can work. On the same subject, the NSTAR is planning on using herbicides again, and I did put this letter from, to the editor in everybody's box. I think it's incumbent, and I would like to know, do you have a position? Are we putting forward a position to the right-of-way coordinator of Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources in Boston at 251 Causeway Street? Are we saying anything as a town about how we feel about them using herbicide under the power lines?
Well, I think longer, I think we have taken a position that we oppose that. Certainly, when it can conflict with our natural resources, it is at a, you know, level of critical concern for us. I have not sent a letter relevant to the most recent spraying on behalf of the Town Manager's Office. I would like to coordinate with the leadership if we're going to do something like that, so as a community, we would look at this and decide how to proceed with that, so.
Just because I'm so concerned about our water, and we've got enough problems with water that adding gallons, thousands of gallons of herbicide on top of it just seems like maybe not a good idea. So, I'm encouraging us individually to write if we don't get around to doing it as a council. I think it's imperative that we do so. Thank you.
Any other Councilors? Vice President Crocker?
Yes, on the matter of David and Goliath here on our two big state and state-federal programs that we discussed on your workload. Back to Mass Department of Fish and Wildlife, certainly yeoman's effort to get them to the table, yeoman's effort to get them to concede to this point. We do seem like we're in a small stall, and we did talk about trying to get DEP to release some water so that you know that the quality of water there is appropriate for us to continue the effort. The downside of pushing that extremely hard, as you say, may stop the cooperative effort where they're doing and spending money that we would have to spend if we actually got a well there. How do you see the next step with DEP in trying to identify the quality of water?
I see us signing a three-party agreement with DEP, Fish and Wildlife, and the town that allows us access to, at first, we were hoping we wouldn't have to do that because DEP was going to pull the samples, but then we need the samples, so we have to be in a relationship between the three parties. That's at a final stage right now with ourselves and legal. I think it'll move quickly at this point, so hopefully, it'll be a matter of DEP telling us when they're going to pull the samples.
When you say it's at a discussion with legal, is that legal of all three entities or just our legal trying to push it forward?
I believe at this point, it's us looking at it. The other two, I could be incorrect, but I have, you know, communications as recent as today. We're looking at the final documents, and, you know, when we go into this, either with the quality or the quantity issues, they bring us agreements that they, you know, basically say, well, you sign the standard agreement or else all bets are off. So, we try to make sure that's, I guess that's okay, as long as the agreement works for all three parties. So, we want to be very careful as we enter into this. That's all.
Okay.
I don't see any major red flags on getting to that quality information. I believe that'll, that'll happen. And we want that before we make the bigger investment into doing all of this modeling.
Yes. You and your professionals have plenty to do here without running up to Boston to do this, but we have no greater need than to solve the water problem for Hyannis. So, we're all supporting it, but we're also trying to understand what is the next steps and what we might expect from some of the bigger boys uptown as we negotiate and go forward.
I'm seeing no pushback from them.
Okay.
At this point, it's moving through the, in both cases, the three-party agreements, getting them done and then getting the work done.
And if we have the rights to go and go out to RFP and bring in professionals to draw the water and so forth, we also may look at some other aspects that would solve Hyannis's problems as well, some other areas.
Yes, that's an ongoing effort. We've already selected a consultant.
I don't want everybody to think you put it all on this job.
Oh, no, 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 no.
With the infrastructure up at that end of town, that's a great place for us to go, but it's not our only answer.
Actually, they have a preliminary study already completed. You all had appropriated this money in a past fiscal year. We retained them within the last year, and they've been working on that, and I haven't reviewed the study, but I know DPW has it, and they're reviewing it.
And us against the big boys again, FAA, through you or through your assistant manager. The recent meeting, we had a very favorable meeting with the airport commissioners, and I would have to say that Eric did a great job and as well as did Andy, and I thought they walked away in a very positive note, and I thought everybody was on the same page. Our next big hurdle was the FAA meeting this week, or was it this week?
Yeah.
And if we could just maybe clarify a couple people in the room, how we thought it went?
Yes, sir. Andy Clyburn, Assistant Town Manager. We had a meeting with the FAA at the airport yesterday. Staff, Town Attorney, myself, David Anthony, Director of Property, the Airport Commissioner, Bud, and Katie Service, and it was a very productive meeting. We clarified a few things with regard to the term that would be acceptable to them and what the assignment of rights issues that we had been struggling with. So, I think we're all on the same page. It was, it was a very good meeting and optimistic that we'll be able to move forward with an RFP in short order.
And the naysayers have now understood that there is a way to present this to the FAA, and the FAA understands what is our goal here at this point.
They were present, yes, sir.
That's terrific. Congratulations.
Yes, sir.
That's another big hurdle. We're gaining on the big ones, folks. Hang on. Thank you.
If I might?
Yeah. Go ahead.
I spoke with attorney while, and we're close on those, so we'll just touch base one more time with Fish and Wildlife, and we should be moving on those shortly.
Great. Councilor Flores?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mark, just a couple of quick issues. I want to echo the concerns raised by Councilor Hebert. You know, the spraying of herbicides up and along all of the power lines that really cut through pretty much almost all of Precinct One are of major concern to me, having been on the Water Resources Advisory Committee, and we've submitted those reports. That committee has been sunsetted, but, you know, all along, our biggest issue has been the mitigation of really nitrogen-related kinds of concerns. And although everyone points to septic systems as probably the number-one detriment to creating that, probably number-two is the amount of pesticides that we, as residents of the town, put in our grass and to allow NSTAR to sort of just get a... as residents of the town, put in our grass. And to, to allow NSTAR to sort of just get a, a green light without any pushback or concerns or questioning the types of herbicides that might be used, I think is a critical issue. So, I would be concerned as that moves forward, as if you as town manager could voice those concerns that, you know, along that water line, there's, there's lots of concerns because we do live, we live in our aquifer, and there's nothing more important than water. The second issue has to do with Vineyard Wind. As that moves forward, I want to be sure that, as much as I support renewable energies, I want to be sure that that industry can coexist, if you will, with our fishing industry, both charter boats, both scallopers, the folks who make a living being fishermen on a regular basis. There's lots of concerns, lots of issues. I know Nate Mayo's in the audience tonight. He and I have had a number of, he's, we've had a few conversations on this, but that's a concern of a number of constituents that have been in touch with me. So, I support renewable energy, but it has to coexist in terms of with some of our industries that are, that have been longstanding on Cape Cod and the islands. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counsel Schnep?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mark, for the work charts. That will be very helpful in our review of the administrative code changes that we have to be looking at. So, I have a question again on the Kmart Plaza, the request for proposal, and some of this comes out of my newness to the council and, and just the understanding of the Airport Commission vis-à-vis the town. And to me, the RFP is a critical piece in what ends up getting submitted and where, who's making the decision on what's going in that RFP and what we might be seeing in proposals that are submitted?
Yes, ma'am. We've had a team that have been working on the request for proposal for a number of months. I think we began our efforts August, September of last year. It is under the airport control, and it is a revenue-generating asset for the airport. Obviously, the town is the financial backstop for the airport. The town has staff to support the airport. So, we have made this a very high priority of our staff. I'm personally involved. Like I said, the town attorney, Elizabeth Jenkins, Planning and Development, David Anthony, et cetera. We're all helping Bud and Katie develop the RFP. But the RFP, the request proposal that will go out is for a long-term land lease of that Kmart Plaza. It is not due to expire for another six years, but we're trying to get ahead of that, get it out sooner than later for a number of reasons. And like I said, we've been working on it for a number of months, and it will, the approval will have to be approved by both the Airport Commission and Town Council based on the length of the term of the lease. I think the threshold is thirty, thirty-five years. If it goes over thirty years, it has to be Town Council. So, it will come before Town Council when we get to that point. We don't have definitive dates yet, but we're, we're thinking somewhere in the, hopefully by the end of this calendar year is really what our goal is. The RFP of this magnitude will probably go out for a hundred and twenty days, and then probably another a hundred and eighty days to properly evaluate the potential developers that we hope this RFP will bring in.
Anyone else? Counselor Dagwani?
Yes, I just wanted to speak on the Eversource issue with NSTAR. And I would like to propose to the council that we submit a letter. I mean, I don't mind that town manager, I'd be happy to work with you. That's something you prefer to do, but I wouldn't mind proposing a letter for the coun, from the council, that we're in opposition of this. If Mr. Hebert and Mr. Flores and council leadership would work with me, but first, we, you know, we have to try to get, I need to get the councils permission to submit something, that we are against this. We did this when I was Town Council President. We submitted a letter. It was very helpful that we had something from the council. And more towns that send these kinds of letters off, it, it gives us all strength here on the Cape to protect our waterways and to not have this kind of herbicide plant project continuity Eversource. They've done it for five years, and I can see that it'll be another five years of the same thing. So, I think it's important that our voices be heard and that we be seen.
Yeah, we'll work with the town manager to do similar to what we did the last time. I think that was, has it been that long? I feel like we've done one since then, too. I think we've done a couple over the last few years. Yeah. We'll work with you on that.
I, I think I, oh, I'm sorry. No, I think I minimized my answer to Counsel Hebert. I, I fully recognize the, the, our water is, is kind of the heart of, of who we are here, and certainly any uses on land that can conflict with preserving that resource are of concern. Whether it's, whether it's removing, using chemicals, you know, vegetation, or whether it is oils that may be contained in all-size substations. I don't know if you know that, you know, Attorney McLaughlin did great work over at the airport when they had to upgrade a substation to have it modernized to something far beyond what, you know, they currently install for those substations. So, every single time we have the opportunity, we are in discussions, sometimes more than discussion, sometimes review and litigation relevant to what is being proposed. So, just all, you, you should all know that it's an absolute priority to us. But certainly, I, I just haven't submitted a letter this time relevant to the most recent spraying. But we constantly express our concerns about their means and methods, and we will certainly coordinate with the council on this.
Anyone else? Counselor Cullum?
Two, two quick things. I just want to say thank you for all your work on the airport parcel, the Kmart parcel. Six years is obviously not a lo, not long enough to get any anchor tenant in there, and we've been working on this for a really long time. I remember when Ann Kennedy was here, and the meetings were three hours longer. I mean, no, I'm just kidding. But we spent a lot of time, she's watching. Hi, Ann. Congratulations on the new grandbaby. But I remember that we, you know, we spent so much time poring over this and making lots of enemies, so to, to like bridge those, those broken fences is really a good move. Thanks for all your efforts on that. And then, as far as Eversource is concerned, I mean, I have concerns that go way beyond. There are pesticides. They basically topped every tree on C Street for their wires. I think they're terrible neighbors, and I definitely would support a letter. I am offended by a lot of things that they do. I think that they come in and wholesale our community and change the whole aspect of a neighborhood, and it's awful. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Hebert?
Thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me to speak again, and I know I'm maybe beating it to death. However, it seems like, you know, Counsel Crocker said earlier about David and Goliath, and it seems like utilities, especially Eversource, when they could do other alternatives. And we're talking all the time about our concern about emerging chemicals in our water. So, I, I loved it, if you saw my face, when you said litigation. In my personal letter to them, I'm saying that they will not be exempt when we start to look at the soup of chemicals that's hurting our people, that, you know, we're going to sue them for the damage that they're doing permanently. When we think of the young people who presented tonight, that's what I'm looking at, is what is their future going to be like when, when the water's contaminated or when we have new diseases coming up. So, I think everything that we can do, inclusive of saying, reminding them that they will be held accountable, but the damage will already be done. So, that's why we have to stop it. Thank you.
Any other counselors? All right. Thank you very much, Mark, Andy.
If I might, I apologize. I didn't write this one down, but this is significant. The intersection of Route 28 and Yarmouth Road, Willow Street, we were informed at the MPO meeting that the Mass DOT is behind schedule on that intersection. They gave me three reasons why, two related to design, one related to land acquisition. I have spoken with Mass DOT. I did inform them that I don't like going over people's heads because tomorrow I'm going to need to work with them on the Bursary Way 28 intersection, and then beyond that it'll be. And so, it's, it's very important that they know what we're going to do. I told them if they couldn't accelerate it, that I was going to reach out to our legislative body and our Lieutenant Governor and Governor's Office and express our concern and dissatisfaction. It does seem as though it's related to the land acquisition portion. I am requesting a, a schedule, and I, coming from this construction background, I understand that can, schedules change, but I'd like to really pin them down on when they're going to bid it. The design's at almost a hundred percent. It's supposed to be a hundred percent this month. When are they going to bid it? When are they going to construct it? If they're bumping, it's a $10 million project that's funded by federal and state funds. This is significant. We don't want to lose this money. It is money that's there for the project. If they move it from nineteen to twen, federal fiscal nineteen to federal fiscal twenty, they're saying that it, it will be a shift that will, you know, still have the funding available, but my experience is that may not be the case. So, I am actively pursuing this. I am going to communicate as I've described, and I will stay in communication with Mass DOT as well. But you all should just know that that's occurred. Thank you.
Thank, Vice President Crocker?
I'm sorry. I'd like to get a follow-up on that. That's a great project that we need to accomplish. We also, when they were down here, we wrote them pretty hard about creating two bottlenecks by the way they're designing it now, which is around the car dealerships there where it still goes down to one lane. Is there any chance, the only saving grace would be if they would roll the project to be the correct project and finance it in its entirety? And I do agree with you wholly and totally, the financing that may have been there may have been cash at one time. Next time, they'll change it to payments over twenty years, and let's hope they're good for it, right?
Yep.
But any chance we can get this to be the right project?
I, I will ask. They did not offer any, any additional?
Come on.
But, but you're correct. So, I, I will personally, you know, with, with Director Santos and myself, we will stay on top of this, and we will, we will see if, if we can obtain more because of their delays.
Because we're late.
Yes.
It would be the only saving grace because we all know what's going to happen immediately when you have two lanes to one lane to two lanes. Either way, it's going to be real difficult on us. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mark. All right. We're going to move into the orders of the day, and the clerk loves when I take things. Oh, I'm sorry. It's getting, it's getting late already. I wanted to move into the orders of the day, but if you guys want to continue on with the minutia, let's go. All right. Vice President Crocker, could we, please act on the minutes of the Town Council meeting on February fifteenth?
Yes, Mr. President. In our packets, we have the Town Council Minute Meeting Minutes of February 15, 2018. I move they be approved as drafted.
Second, all those in favor approving the minutes of February 15, 2018? All those opposed or abstaining? None? That's unanimous. Thank you. And now we have brief communications from elected officials, boards, committees, staff, commission reports, correspondents, and announcements. Anyone? Counsel Beanbender?
I'll try and make this brief and quickly. So, this is a situation not reasonably anticipated by the chair. It is time-sensitive, and, and what it's in relation to is the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management and the offshore drilling proposals that are under review in, in, in the waters around the United States, continental United States, but specifically, I'm concerned about the waters off of New England relative to how important our water is to our economy. And I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity for us to write a letter in, in response to public comment to, to the Bureau. It, public comment must be submitted by March 9th, so I'm just curious if there's something, a letter that we can do as the council, just expressing our great concern and, and not wanting this to happen off of our shores because of the potential negative impact.
Well, it's obviously a big issue that has to be discussed, but we can certainly talk with the town manager and see if there's, you know, something that we can put together, but it's, we're not going to have an opportunity to discuss that and get into such a big issue in such a short amount of time as a council. But I'll certainly talk with the town staff. Vice President Crocker, you have something to add, or?
Well, obviously, the sensitivity and the time of it is key, but ob, obviously, anything we've ever done in casting a letter has been vetted by all of us. So, if you have some discussion about how to vet it, then we could send it off to the town manager or through you and the manager if, if it all happens in a fifteen-minute window here or something.
I mean, we'd have to have a letter drafted, vetted through legal, and we'd have to vote on it because we, we don't meet again until the 15th. So, I don't know how, process-wise, how you can do that.
But in fairness, it doesn't really need to say much more than we're opposed to it as a council. I mean, we don't need to go into every detail about it. We can just say that as a council and because we live in a.
An environmentally sensitive area.
If we can all come to an agreement on that, we could, that could be done in two seconds, I would think.
Ruth, is that something that we could work on together?
Good evening, Council Vice President, President. I just want to talk about the process. I, in terms of Counsel Cullum's brief response, I think that would be okay. The idea of circulating a draft is a violation of the open meeting law, so we cannot do that. But if the council is in consensus to do a broad brush of strokes, you know, approach saying, you know, very simply how this is going to affect our economy and our coastal waters and our endangered species, something very, you know, broad, but, you know, getting the point, I think that can, if that could be agreed on at this meeting, it wasn't reasonably anticipated by the chair, and it is time-sensitive, so you cannot put it off to the next meeting and meet that timeframe. I don't know if that's responsive?
Well, I mean, it would have to be something extremely general and benign. I can't be drawing any conclusions. I don't know who would draft something before. I mean, we could give direction, I guess, to legal to draft something because you'd be doing comments for other environmental reviews. If that's the consensus of the council, if they want a general comment to go in, but it would have to be a very general benign letter. Vice President Crocker?
If we kept it that it may have a negative impact on our economy and our natural resource, as those being the two issues, perhaps those are something all of us could agree, or at least vote on to see if we're in favor of sending a letter with those two issues in it.
Are you making, someone making a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we draft a letter that states that we are in, we have grave concerns concerning the offshore drilling related to our economic security impact on environment off of, off of the Cape and those waters for offshore drilling in our economy.
Second that.
To be drafted by legal.
To be drafted by legal, correct.
Second.
I have a second.
And that it would state we're in opposition of offshore drilling based on the potential negative impact of those three things, yes.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? I think it's quick, but, all right. Go ahead. Any other announcements? Counsel Levec?
This Saturday night at the Cape Carter Resort is the Barnstable Celebration Comedy Night, Funny for Funds event that they have. I think it's four comics they have. Admission's $25. It's a real fun night, silent auction, raffle, live auction, and all the money goes to the after prom party, keep our kids safe after the prom. And it's, I've been involved in some Funny for Funds events, and it is worth the price of admission. It's a good time. And in full disclosure, it is probably would be a PG-13 show, so maybe, you know, just keep that in mind. So, but thank you, Mr. President.
We're all right with that. We're all old enough. Counselar Neary?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just two quick, two quick announcements. Our Lady of Victory is opening up their scholarship applications right now. You can pick up the application at the parish office for scholarships for college. Additionally, the Knights of Columbus has, has two additional $2,000 scholarships that will be awarded to high school graduating seniors. The deadline for the Knights of Columbus is April 13th, and Our Lady of Victory Parish is May 1st, so. is May 1st, so the students can get in, pick those applications up, and make a nice story, and hopefully get some college funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Flores?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just three quick things. First, just a reminder that on March 11th, Sunday, 5:00 to 8:00, at the Barnstable Tavern, they're going to have the, in partnership with my fellow counselor, Phil Wallace, there will be the West Barnstable Scholarship Fundraiser. That's a good program. I believe the tickets are $50, with the majority of the proceeds going to support scholarships for kids graduating from Barnstable High School. Secondly, on March 18th, which is another Sunday, at 5:00 at the Comerquit Golf Club, Sturgis Library, which is the library in Barnstable Village, will also be only a fundraising dinner. That's at 5:00. I would encourage folks who want to support libraries to attend that. And finally, on March 21st, which will be a Wednesday evening, I'll announce this again at the March 15th meeting, but being the governor's appointee to the nuclear decommissioning panel, I've managed to get the commission to hold a meeting at the Cape Cod Community College in the Tilden Auditorium from 6:30 to 8:30. That's on behalf of the Cape Downwinders and a whole host of other groups. So if you want to come and listen to one of the meetings and see what's going on relative to the eventual closing of the Pilgrim Nuclear Power Plant, which is scheduled for June 1st, 2019, I would encourage anyone who might be listening, anyone in the audience, to attend that. Again, it'll be 6:30 to 8:30 at Four Seas in the Tilden Auditorium. Thank you. March 21st.
Councilor Schnep?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make note of another student-led activity coming up on March 24th. There has been a group of students across the Cape, including here in Barnstable, who have come together and created the Cape Cod Student Board and are putting on an event here in our Hyannis Green, March For Our Lives, at 11:00. And I know that they have actually been going around the various town offices to get the appropriate permits, and I think it's an amazing activity that is going to be happening.
Thank you for that. Anyone else? All right, now can I go to the orders of the day? All right. I was going to take an item out of order so Patty could leave, but now she's not here, so she's, we're going to, I'm not going to do that. If she comes back, I'll move that up. She's not coming back? So you're doing the grant? Okay. The clerk loves it when I do this, when I take things out of order. So I'm going to go to the last item in new business, and I'm going to have Lynn Pointe, our Director of Community Services, come up for the rationale. But first, Council Cullum, could you please read item 2018-102?
Yes, sirree. Item 2018-102, acceptance of a grant in the amount of $3,000 from Cape Cod Healthcare to the Barnstable Youth Commission's Youth Summit, as written.
Go ahead, thank you.
Thank you, President Stein Hilber. And councilors, Lynn Pointe, Community Services Director, I really don't think that I can add anything to what Matt, Michael, Ethan, Caleb, and Connor said earlier this evening. You know what the program is. It's outstanding, and we're extremely grateful to Cape Cod Healthcare for offering this $3,000 grant.
Any council questions or discussion? Councilor Tinsley?
Question.
All those in favor moving the question? That is unanimous, this is item 2018-0102. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, now we'll go back up to old business. Vice President Crocker, could you please read item 2018-053?
Yes, Mr. President. Old business may be acted upon, roll call vote needs two-thirds. 2018-053, amending Article 5, Chapter 240, Section 47 dot 1, and 128 of the zoning ordinance to revise regulations for family apartments as drafted.
I have a second, and we have Elizabeth Jenkins, our Director of Planning and Development here. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, President Stein Hilber, councilors. Nice to see you. I'm here to discuss or present an amendment to our current family apartment ordinance. Currently, our town zoning ordinance allows for an accessory apartment to be created in an owner-occupied, single-family home that, with the accessory apartment, with the restriction that that apartment be occupied by a member of a family of the owner of the home. This is an important program that supports both financial and social stability of our families in the town of Barnstable, but also by giving them the flexibility to allow the creation of apartment, it allows the necessary degree of separation that, to keep families in harmony. So this proposed amendment, this proposed amendment would modify our family apartment ordinance in three critical ways, dealing with the restrictions on occupancy of the apartment, the permitting thresholds, and the enforcement of the apartment once it is, once a family has decided that they don't want to proceed with it anymore. So briefly walking you through those, currently, the ordinance restricts the participation in the program to homeowners as well as family members who are residing, who are residing year-round. So you must be a year-round occupant of the home, as well as the folks residing in the apartment must reside there year-round as well. So we understand that we have a lot of people in our community who, well, are snowbirds, who will go away for a few months of the year, and from an enforcement perspective, this, you know, this creates kind of an uncomfortable situation. So this would add additional flexibility to the program to allow both the single-family dwelling and the apartment to be occupied seasonally, so it would remove the year-round restriction there, thus giving families more flexibility to take advantage of these family apartment requirements. The second, again, the second major change, and I'm sorry, I should back up and say that additionally, in support of that provision, there's some additional language added in the ordinance to strengthen the intent that neither the dwelling or the family apartment would be rented to non-family members. We felt that it was important to reiterate that in the ordinance. That really is a guiding document for folks who are interested in this program. So that language you'll see included there as well. The second proposed change really deals with permitting, and as we were reviewing this ordinance, certainly myself, as well as the current building commissioner, have had a lot of familiarity with permitting these apartments with residents of the town of Barnstable's over the years at the Zoning Board of Appeals. So in kind of reviewing the track record of these permits at the board, there are several recommended changes, and the first deals with the size limitations on the family apartments. Currently, there are limitations in the ordinance that say every apartment over 800 square feet has to be reviewed by the Zoning Board of Appeals and caps the maximum size of an apartment at 1,200 square feet. This, there are quite a few applications that come through the Zoning Board of Appeals each year, and typically, I will say, they're not problematic. I don't think I've ever seen one denied in my tenure here. So this would lift the requirement for a special permit at the Zoning Board of Appeals for apartments at 800 square feet, lift it to 50% of the size of the home. You know, that's where you start, we feel like you start to reach the threshold where maybe you want to take a closer look at whether or not that apartment is in fact accessory. So we felt like that was a more appropriate time to get the Zoning Board of Appeals involved. The second up, current restriction in the ordinance deals with whether the apartment is attached to the home or detached. Currently, the ordinance requires apartments to be attached to and accessible from within the single-family home. I'll tell you, we get a number of requests at the Zoning Board each year for variances from this provision to allow an apartment to be created, say, above a garage or in an existing independent structure, an existing detached structure. A variance is a very high legal standard to meet for a homeowner, so this would give the option for a homeowner to allow a detached apartment by a special permit, as opposed to a variance. And again, the third primary change deals with the enforcement of the apartments once a family decide that they no longer want to keep that apartment occupied by a family member. So currently, right now, under the ordinance, typically, a homeowner has two options. They can, excuse me, either choose to convert the apartment to a rental unit under the town's accessory affordable apartment program, again, which allows that apartment to be rented to somebody whose owner occupa, I'm sorry, who is income-qualified, but, you know, a lot of people aren't comfortable, they don't want to do that, that's not why they were participating. And the second option is to completely remove the apartment, so you have to completely remove the kitchen. It says specifically, the kitchen, take out any trace that it was there, cap the utilities behind the wall, everything, cabinets. This doesn't give homeowners, or really the building commissioner, a lot of flexibility. So we worked with the building commissioner to include provisions that would give himself and homeowners options, so they could either make changes to the kitchen, to the bathroom, or otherwise to the house to, again, to kind of restore the integrity of the single-family dwelling, but not require anything quite so specific regarding its removal. I will note that the planning board considered the proposed amendments on Monday and unanimously voted to support the changes in the ordinance. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Elizabeth. Council Flores?
Just a quick question. For those of us that are old enough, in the late '70s, there was a song by Sister Sledge that was entitled "We Are Family." When she, when they sang that song, "We Are Family" was pretty much the world. In all of the documents that I've looked at, have we specifically defined what we mean by family?
So our zoning ordinance does contain a definition. It's a little bit archaic. It does say blood or marriage, but again, the enforcement of this program, the family does have to file an affidavit with the building commissioner demonstrating that those, that the occupants are in fact family members, and he makes that determination.
So we're not talking, so if it's a blended family and they're not blood relatives, they wouldn't be eligible?
Again, that's not necessarily how it's enforced, no. So again, I think the building commissioner has the discretion to, through this affidavit process, if there's a demonstration that they are in fact a cohesive family to allow.
I respect the discretion, but I'm very concerned that we don't have a specific definition of what we mean by family, because the families are probably, when we defined it five, 10, 15 years ago, was probably very different in today's world, and I would want to be sure that we were not excluding, eliminating, making it more difficult for someone to obviously take advantage of this program. I'm for the program, but I think we should clarify what we mean by family.
Any other councilors? Councilor Hebert?
Thank you. Elizabeth, so, did you say that there would be a provision so that if the family no longer used the family apartment, that under the guidance with the commission, building commissioner, that the apartment could possibly become an accessory apartment?
Correct. So currently, under our regulatory structure, under our zoning code, there are really only two options to create a new apartment in a single-family dwelling. One of them is the family apartment, the second one is the accessory affordable apartment. So we do often see folks kind of transfer between one and the other. I think once people make that investment to create that unit, certainly, they're, you know, they're interested in options, how they can use them back and forth. So yes, we do see, we frequently see transfers between the two programs.
Okay. And it's just clarification of which program that people are operating under, so that makes sense. I mean, I cringe, because we don't have enough housing, to hear that a kitchen's going to be dismantled, and, yeah, that hurts. Thank you.
Councilor Rapaceetti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of questions. Are these, well, apartments or family units, are they inspected on an annual basis like the regular apartments, and is there a fee, annual fee for that, or is it just done once?
So once they're created, they do have to get a building permit from the building commissioner and demonstrate that they do meet all building code requirements, and we do do an annual certification to make sure that they are being occupied. I don't believe they are inspected annually, again, because when they get created, there is that oversight at that time by the building division that they've complied.
So it's, so the enforcement is not like the apartments where there's an annual inspection and they have to pay a $90 registration to have an apartment to rent out? And these family units don't have a separate address? They're under the guise of the main address, unlike the accessory, which has an A or a separate address?
Exactly. So I think the way that this is looked at is, you know, because of the nature of the family, it is more of an extension of the single-family home of the dwelling, so they are not registered under the program. Again, I think this program, there's a little bit more leeway in thinking that, you know, it is just a kind of a separate accommodation for your family, but within your home.
Okay, thank you.
Any other councilors? Vice President Crocker?
I would love to thank the building inspector for his input. We've had these discussions that have gone on and on for years about how many kitchens in a home and all the issues that go forward, and as a breath of fresh air, our new building commissioner again speaks to a legal decision that was made on Ernie Bock's place in Edgerton, where he had nine kitchens, and he won it all the way through the SJC. So, you know, our idea of what's right and wrong about these are not nearly as pressing as what it can be to a family who's downsizing, who's lost members, or who's trying to figure their estates. Another approach he took to putting the houses together instead of tearing everything apart was to return it to be a single-family home. So in other words, every apartment that we all think of or know has its own access, has its own identity, and is segregated. So you can go in and say, well, you know, mom's deceased, dad's deceased, God forbid either, but, so I'm going to take the doorway out, and now this is part of my house as my normal family grows. So these are, these are real resolves to the problematic issues of owning real estate for families and families growing and families taking care of their own as we go forward. So again, hats off to the building commissioner to identify where the problems are and to find solutions on our behalf.
Anyone else?
Move the question?
All those in favor moving the question? And that is unanimous, and Madam Clerk, this is a roll call, two-thirds required. This is item 2018-053.
Beedenbender?
Yes.
Crocker?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Flores?
Before I vote, just again, another comment. Could you provide for us at the next meeting the definition of family according to what our zoning rules and regs suggest? Because that's what we're voting on this evening, based on what we're defining, and I assume we could always change that down the road if we wanted to expand it.
Well, we've already moved the question.
I understand we've moved the question, but my point is that we don't know, we haven't defined what a family is. That's all I'm asking.
What's your vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you very much. Councilor Dagwan, could you please read item 2018-063 and open the public hearing? I believe it's on page seven.
Thank you, Mr. President. Appropriation and transfer order, the amount of $200,175 for the evaluation, design, and permitting of the renovation of the Armory Building located at 225 South Street, Hyannis, and this should be open for public comment.
I have a second, and Town Manager Mark Ellis with the rationale. I know you gave us a... I have a second. And Town Manager Markell's with the rationale. I know you gave us an overview at the last meeting, so.
Good evening, Markell's Town Manager. This is the appropriation and transfer order for the evaluation, design, and permitting of the renovation of the armory building at 225 South Street here in Hyannis. This is a building that was originally built in the 50s. You know, the town received this back in 2006. It was originally town land. The state built an armory there after the town gave the state the land. The state gave us back the armory at the end of its useful life in 2006. Certainly, the structure has historic significance. There have been several proposals at this site relevant to potential uses, and we've gone out to request for proposal on this. We have not been successful in securing a relationship with somebody in that facility. It was identified that, or it is my opinion, but it's also been identified that the major hurdles have been related to the restrictions on the use of the building when we got it back from the state, the hazmat, or the hazardous material in the building, and the general infrastructure or physical improvements that need to occur at the building. At this point, it's actually deteriorated further from 2006, and we do have a leaking roof, and we do have windows that are, you know, are leaking, and you don't hold the weather out any longer. None of the systems work in the building. So basically, it's just dry storage in a prime location within our downtown. The proposed capital improvement project is for the initial soft costs associated with the architectural engineering design and limited hazmat testing, and abatement needed at the armory in an effort to implement a phased capital improvement project. In addition to commencing the preliminary assessment and design, and internal evaluation of the phased improvements and associated funding for said phased improvements would be developed and presented to Town Council for consideration as this effort progresses toward the desired outcomes. The outcome of this phased effort would allow for the town to evaluate both municipal or leased options for future use of the facility. So far, we've pretty much looked for leased options, because we really haven't stepped up to say, we're going to put this building in a condition and make a capital investment in it. So at this point, both are in play. The reason that's occurred is, again, the prime location of the asset, and it all ties into our asset management program, quite honestly. But beyond that, the opportunity to potentially secure some capital funds that have been earmarked and may be approved in the coming fiscal year by the state. So, 1.6 million of what we see is about a $2.6 million project, to really create a building that's usable. And then if we want to go beyond that with a, if we use it for municipal use, let's say, there are other potential funding sources, such as cable funds, if we want to have meeting rooms with television capabilities, et cetera. If we decide to, even though it does have historic significance, it is not 75 years old. Therefore, I do not believe it's eligible unless we go for historic designation for CPC funds. I have had discussions with Lindsay Council relevant to CPC funds for the physical building, and that is a potential for us as well. So there's multiple funding sources as we move forward with this effort. But it's our opinion that until we create a usable building, we can go through as many RFPs as we want. But in each case, we haven't been able to reach a relationship, because no one's wanted to invest the type of money necessary to make it a usable facility. And we can't sell the facility. We would have to go back and, we would have to go back and ask the state legislature to allow us to do that, if we were going to consider that option. So this $200,175 is to begin this process. We also will have, in the CIP that you'll be seeing in about 30 days or so, additional funds to continue this effort. So, but we wanted to get going, because we want to be, one of the positives of Barnstable, when we do pursue funds from outside sources, in this case, the state, is we're usually shovel-ready. That carries a lot of weight in us being able to secure funds. This would move us toward that. So that's why I brought it forward, kind of out of the normal budget sequence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And this is a public hearing. So any members of the public wish to speak on this item, please come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing. Counselor discussion on this item. Anyone? Do I have a motion to move the question? All those in favor moving the question? All right. This is item 2018-063. Madam Clerk, this is a roll call vote.
Counselors. Crocker?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagewan?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Stein-Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Beeden Bender?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mark. All right, moving back into new business, Counselor Rap Grissette, could you please read item 2018-098, and refer to a second reading on March 15?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This is item 2018-098, appointments to a board committee or commission. First reading, refer to a second reading on March 15. Resolve the Town Council points to following individuals to a multiple-member board committee or commission. Comprehensive Financial Advisory Committee, Hector Gunther, 45 Deerfield Road, Ostrville, is a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/18. Council on Aging, Janice La Riviere, 11 Vista Circle, Centerville, is an associate member to a term expiring 6/30/2020. Economic Development Commission, Hector Gunther, 45 Deerfield Road, Ostrville, is a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/18. Paul Kuzak, 35 Second Avenue, Ostrville, is a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/19. Jane Neshba, Community Service Award Committee. Ann O'Neil, Schulte, 52 Fox Run, Centerville, is a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/18. Personnel Board, David Nolan, 97 Willow Run Drive, Centerville, is a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/18. Shellfish Committee, Paul Caruso, 42 Matthew Way, Marshance Mills, is a member to, at large, to a term expiring 6/30/19. And Paul Kuzak, 35 Second Avenue, Ostrville, is a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/18.
Second. I have a second. This is item 2018-098, appointments to a board committee or commission. All those in favor of moving this to a second reading on March 15, 2018. And that is unanimous. Counselor Rap Grissette, could you continue on and read item 2018-099, refer to a second reading on March 15?
Yes. Item 2018-099, reappointments to a board committee or commission. Resolve the Town Council reappoints the following individuals to a multiple-member board committee or commission. Renewable Energy Commission, Jan Rapp, as a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2020. So first reading to a second reading on March 15.
Second. I have a second. This is item 2018-099, reappointments to a board committee or commission. All those in favor of referring this to a second reading on March 15, 2018. And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Counselor Cullum, could you please read and open the public hearing on item 2018-100?
Yes. Item 2018-100, resolve authorizing the Town Manager to submit revised downtown Hyannis Growth Incentive Zone application to the Cape Cod Commission. I'd like to open this for a public hearing, please.
I have a second. All right. And we have Director of Planning and Development with us again, Elizabeth Jenkins. Welcome back.
Thank you, President Stein-Hilber. Counselors, Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development. I'm here this evening to present a revised application for the downtown Hyannis Growth Incentive Zone. And I'd like to speak to the ways it's changed and to the ways the application has not changed. The purpose of the Growth Incentive Zone application and the goals identified within the Growth Incentive Zone application have not changed since the application we considered at a public hearing here several months ago, several weeks ago. The purpose of the GIZ remains to provide an incentive for economic and residential investment in downtown Hyannis through providing a tool for permit streamlining, primarily for exempting large projects from review by the Cape Cod Commission, in furtherance of the goals of the zone, which are to, again, direct growth to the heart of Hyannis and to promote downtown revitalization through a process that is long-term additive and that needs the support of our community on a continued basis. What has changed are three things primarily, and the Planning and Development Department outlined this for Planning Board counselors and the general public in a memorandum that we issued concurrent with the revised application. And those three primary changes deal with the boundary, the applicability to the commission's regulations, and then to the public comment that we have received thus far. So the changes related to the boundary are, of course, the removal of the property at 35 Scudder from potential inclusion within the Growth Incentive Zone at this time. In reaction to the letter that we received from the property owners at 35 Scudder withdrawing their request, we made an amendment to the application, primarily to the section that addressed the boundary, to remove that reference and to revert back to the boundary that's currently in place for the Growth Incentive Zone today. So associated, there were some associated changes in the application where there were other references to that boundary change, and of course, the maps that referred, that showed that parcel. So those were all amended in the application. So that's the boundary. The second change, again, deals with the, our, the interface of our application and the Cape Cod Commission regulations for Growth Incentive Zones. So, we had been, as we had indicated before in this process, the town of Barnstable had been collaborating with the Cape Cod Commission on essentially a new regional approach to thinking about Growth Incentive Zones. And that regional approach was being developed with the commission concurrent with our application. So this was the idea that, again, that this, the thresholds would be changed to community measures and other, and other sort of changes. So, as our application has continued through the process, and the Growth Incentive Zone regulations have continued through the process, we felt that it was advisable to make amendments to our application to make sure that it could be responsive, both to the current and proposed Growth Incentive Regulations, as one way to ensure that our application could, could move through the process without any, without any unnecessary delay. So there were really some very minor changes that were necessary to accomplish this, primarily a paragraph, a new introductory paragraph in there that just kind of clarified the overall framework from, you know, from a regulatory perspective. So that change was very minor. The other thing we did, really, you know, somewhat related to that, but not specifically, was we did just want to clarify the thresholds that were being, that were being modified with our application. This isn't not something we really talked about a lot publicly, so we just wanted to be very clear with it. In our current GIZ application, not every single DRI threshold is modified. There are a few in there related to the hospital, the steamship authority, other issues like projects that require MEPA review or cell towers. Under the current GIZ regs, those still, those still have to get forwarded to the Cape Cod Commission, and we have not requested modification to any of those at this time. So that's just kind of a status quo, but we wanted to make it explicit. And the third thing was, we had, under the old application, held a number of public hearings and got some comments on there. We had listed those out for, for the public and for the council in a, in a supporting document. We just went ahead and incorporated all of that public input into the application. And then just a slight update to that third change, we did have a public hearing on the revised application Monday night at the Planning Board. So, my office issued some revision, some additional revisions based on the input we received at that public hearing to the application as well. And, you know, I just want to note, at that public hearing, we had, you know, some folks come forward with some, some new ideas and some potential new collaborations to add amenities and infrastructure to the Growth Incentive Zone. You know, I thought this was really, you know, it really showed that I think the Growth Incentive Zone process i- is a collaboration working the way it's supposed to. You know, it's drawing public attention to opportunities within the district and moving forward this idea that if we are going to support the revitalization of downtown Hyannis, we have to continue paying attention to this document, to this application, to the associated strategic plan in the short and long terms, again, to make sure that, that we're all, as a community, supporting downtown revitalization. So those are the changes in terms of the process. The Planning Board on Monday night, again, did hold a public hearing, answered a lot of questions. There have been varying degrees of participation by board members, and they just, I felt, I think they felt like they needed a little bit of an additional time to act. So they are holding a special meeting on Monday, which I, again, I think reflects the importance of this item and the priority that they are placing it on.
Thank you, Elizabeth. And this is a public hearing. So any members of the public who wish to speak, please come forward.
Thank you. Jeff Swartz, I just would like to thank the council for appointing me to the Planning Board. Just a couple of things I would like to say here. And pardon my voice, because there has been a lot of talking about this, and there's been a lot of meetings, and I do blame a lot of that for that. I was not in favor of continuing it. I thought it was ready for a vote. And the only thing I really want to say here is, I don't think Elizabeth is giving enough credit to the fact that there was hundreds and hundreds of comments. And how she got them all in this document, I think, is a small miracle. And I just want to make that point, that in reading every single one of those particular emails and, and ideas and things along those lines, that at least from my view, and I'm only speaking for myself here, I thought it was ready to go, because I think it did a good job of doing two things. It looked at the Growth Incentive Zone, I think, in the right way. I think it had the right language. But it also, in a lot of ways, looked at the perimeter and the town as a whole, and the people that will use it. And I think that that is what's most important about the language, the structure, and the time and effort that has put into the construction of it, and then also listening to public comments. Thank you very much. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much for that. Anyone else wish to speak?
Yep. Members of the council, my name is Paul Revere. I'm an attorney. I represent Salt Shore Playhouse Associates, doing business as The Melody Tent. This afternoon, I sent by email a copy of a one-page memo with attachments. I hope you didn't read all the attachments. On some minor issues, as you might expect, The Melody Tent is concerned about the inclusion of the 35th Hive Scudder Avenue property within the GIZ. That property has been removed. However, upon reading the council's resolution, the language of the resolution is ambiguous, because it specifically allows amendments to the GIZ application to be submitted to the Cape Cod Commission. I suspect this language was chosen, because the Planning Board did not finalize an application on Monday night, but is, again, having another Monday meeting. And in my memorandum, I simply suggested amendment language to the resolution, so that any expansion of the area covered by the GIZ would clearly require a second Town Council vote. So that is all I have to say, and I want to thank you very much. I know Mr. Neary probably knows that I'm wishing I was playing hockey at 9:20, which I usually do on Thursday nights.
You can still make it.
I am making it, because I have to pay for the ice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor closing the public hearing? And that is unanimous. Counselor discussion on this item. Vice President Crocker?
As a point of information, I would like to suggest that Elizabeth came before us today in the Zoning and Regulatory Committee. We had a 25-minute discussion on the GIZ to understand what the language was, how it would run in parallel with what is in front of the county commissioners to approve as well. And we asked extensively how it would be impacted to both her and our town attorney, the vote, if the vote was taken tonight by this council with the outstanding vote still to come next Monday by the Planning Board. And we voted unanimously to support going forward with it and, and a vote tonight. I think there's plenty of discussion left. If anybody would like to hear how the two items running parallel and the approval of the Planning Board after us is, is a little more customary than we're used to by zoning standards. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Do I have a motion? Counselor Rap Grissette?
I, I can't let this go by without recognizing a letter that we received from Preservation, Massachusetts. And, you know, I know we've already voted on seat captains row, and, and I was the lone dissenter on that vote. But I, I just, I'm, I, I just want us to be very cognizant of the historical assets that we have in this GIZ, that we have remaining. And we're about to lose a significant portion of those historical assets to that development. And because this GIZ excludes the review by the historical boards, it's something that's, that we should not take lightly in our future development of the downtown Hyannis area. It's what attracts us. It's the signs on either end of the village that said, "Welcome to historic Hyannis. Let's not forget that this is an historic area, and, and let's be cognizant of that when we accept developers' proposals going forward." And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Do I have a motion to move the question? All those in favor moving the question? And that is unanimous. This is item 2018-100, and it's a simple majority vote. So all those in favor of this item. And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Moving on to the last item, moving on to the last item of the day. Vice President Crocker, could you please read item 2018-101, refer to a second reading on March 15th, 2018? I believe it's on page 14.
Thank you, Mr. President. New business, first reading to be forwarded to a meeting, a second meeting in March 15th. 2018-101, amendment to the Administrative Code, Chapter 241, Article 4, Municipal Organization as Written.
All right, I have a second. This is item 2018-101. All those in favor referring this to a second reading on March 15th, 2018? And that is unanimous. And that does end the orders of the day. Our next meeting is Thursday, March 15th, 2018. Do I have a motion to adjourn? All those in favor? And that's unanimous. Have a good night, everybody.